Okay, I will call for the February eighth, two thousand twenty-two regular meeting of the Mill Creek City Council's order. We'll begin with the pledge of allegiance from Councilmember Mark.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one my nation and one my people.
There is a delay. Are you ready for roll call?
Yes, please.
Mayor Hootsclaw?
President.
Mayor Protem Vanel?
Here.
Councilmember Bond?
Here.
Councilmember Cavallari?
Here.
Councilmember Steckler?
Here.
Councilmember Allison?
Here.
Councilmember Dukey?
Here.
Thank you, Naomi. Good to have you back. Time for audience communication, time and opportunity to speak to the council on anything on or not off the agenda. And I see Heidel up, so Barb will begin with you, name and address in a few minutes, please.
Barb Heidel, fourteen oh one, one hundred forty-fourth place, southeast Mill Creek. Thank you, Mayor. Other cities have retrofitted their council chambers with better sound systems due to the pandemic. Why can't Mill Creek do this? It is very frustrating, missing half of many presentations due to our poor sound system. This really needs to be fixed, upgraded, whatever it takes to improve the sound situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Barb. Would anyone else like to address the council? Remember, we will move right along to item C, old business, council discussion regarding the retreat. So to follow up our discussion last week, Mayor Protem and I met with Andrew Ballard on Friday to talk about logistics and agenda. To summarize, his rate will be twenty-five hundred. His rates have gone up since he quoted me that number in November, but he'll honor that. That includes all the preparation, includes the full day of the retreat. And what he also does is, within three business days following the retreat, he'll put together reports summarizing the discussion and all the action items that we came up with, so we have something tangible to take away from it. Before we turn to the agenda, we do have a logistical issue because we had talked about twelfth as being our target date, which does not work for Andrew. So we are looking at other weekends, either in March or early April. He's available too, except I forgot my notes. I know the fifth and the twenty-sixth are the two other dates in March where he'd be available. I wasn't, I don't remember if the nineteenth was an option.
I don't remember the nineteen. I remember the fifth and twenty-sixth that circle.
If it helps, the nineteenth is definitely not an option for me.
I think one of the things we're going to need to discuss is, we've been trying to coordinate our retreat with seven of us, four directors and a facilitator, and finding one date where all of us are available. Group, I'm happy, but um, and I haven't asked, the challenge with this too is, city attorney, are our due polls being Google violation of the Open Public Meetings Act? Wire people's availability?
No, they're not. The, the, the results are, would be public and available. They'd be a record.
Okay. Trying to find, bear with me one second. I'm trying to find. So the fifth, Vince, you're not available the fifth?
No.
You're not available? Okay, that's two around. The twelfth was an option.
The twelfth was my only shot in March, in April, second's out, but I think the ninth is open.
Let me say about the ninth.
Wednesday's not good.
I'm sorry?
Are you talking Wednesday? April May?
Is my, on Wednesday?
Nah, I got the wrong. I'm looking at the wrong count, my bad. Ninth is fine.
We have two on the other side of the dais over here. How many couldn't do the twenty-sixth? Is it Stephanie and Vince?
She can't do.
Marissa can't do the twenty-sixth either.
Anybody have April sixteenth?
Well, he's available, but it's course first. Well, it's the only reason we can't do the twelfth because of, the only person not available is our moderator.
Yeah.
We get it. All of them are here. Only if it's, if, because it seems like Vince did get a twelfth.
If we do have the email he says with the dates, I cannot find.
If I have a beer, I can send it to you right now.
Do you have it? Hi, Mark.
You should have a.
Four six, so four six is a Wednesday. March fifth, that was April, did we rule out April sixteen?
Right, we could have twenty-third. I think the further we kind of push it out, and I'm not trying to prolong the agony or anything like that, but it just gives us more opportunity for open schedules.
Sorry.
Sorry.
April twenty-third sounds, uh, Mark, what is it on the twenty-third? I'm trying to remember of this director who's available.
Yeah, the leadership team is available on the twenty-third.
April twenty-third.
April twenty-third. Oh.
I'm not waiting. Okay.
Okay.
Twenty-third, we're for seven of us.
Ninth is one, uh, our team is available.
By the, the, that's a short of moving it to a weekday, is there any, still no desire to do it? I'm trying to phrase it this way. There's still a preference to do it on a weekend as opposed to a weekday, is that easier? Okay, so let's now rather than pencil, put the pen and kind of ask.
A question, sorry, question, Mayor?
Yeah.
On the twenty-third, we are gonna, we're not gonna get all the leadership team. And we're gonna lose a critical player with Director Todd not being there. Could we look at pushing it out a little bit further and create a date that works for the leadership team and the council?
Uh, we could consider that. I don't have Andrew's availability, so I can check on that.
Find a date that could work for the leadership team and the council now pending Andrew's approval. Why don't we push it out another week and see if the third year works for leadership and the council? I'm open. I had one date, that was March fifteenth. So, but we push up on thirty.
Well, we can, we can court Albert. We'll be talking with him tomorrow, so.
Are we all available in the period?
A lot.
Well, I, I think the farther we go in the summer, we've got a practical reality of, we're giving ten people. I'm not sure we're gonna find one date on all ten of us who are gonna be available.
Can we still consider the twelfth then? Well, a, a March, the only person not available is the moderator.
Uh, I, I guess we could try and I could see if there's. Chat with him tomorrow and see what we can do.
Is it being worn off?
Oh, what state? I'm sorry.
March twelve.
Yes, I believe so. My preference would be having council.
No, I, that's my.
Having Mike about the, about the facilitator. I've been finding the facilitator.
Okay. Um, well, let's, so then on the agenda, let's do this. So under the guise, under this was a copy of the draft agenda, which is take, we took what I had outlined before and then we discussed last week and advanced it a little more. Uh, the things that were added were a little bit of a icebreaker, get to know you type thing in the beginning, since we have some new council numbers, and I'm not sure we've ever really done anything like that. And then we also recommended a squad analysis. So rather than spending more time on this agenda with Andrew, um, we have a call scheduled for tomorrow. Let us confirm that he's available. Um, on the twelfth, and then if he is, and we can take this out that our next rate will be to finalize the agenda. Does that work?
Sorry, Mayor. Can I, your, just, uh, our chief of police says on, how, on the phone? Oh, yeah. And that is our interim chief, so. I, I, that could be, okay, for this one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, let's, let's, let me find out those dates. I'll get those and I can report those out via email. Want to find out tomorrow afternoon.
Mayor, I did have one comment though, on the, on the retreat. I do think it's important to have a dialogue about the retreat guidelines. This is a unique situation. Typically, when you have a retreat, you're gonna have your city manager there and your council and leadership. We have a very unique situation where our city manager is not gonna be there. And I think that could, could be open to, let's have a dialogue about maybe, what exactly we want to accomplish at this retreat, because it's kind of like a company having a retreat with no president or CEO there. Numbering power to CEO. That might be helpful as to what kind of, things we want to discuss, any outcomes we want from this retreat. And I, I think that would alter this, this agenda slightly. I'm thinking that maybe what we, what we might want to take a look at is, what do we want to accomplish at this retreat? How could this help our new city manager coming in? What could, what kind of outcome do we want to see from it? What kind of information could we make available to them, to this individual, now, when it comes into that position? As opposed to us putting a plan together for the city when we have a new city manager coming in, probably a few months after we get done with this, or four months. Might warrant a conversation before we move too far down the right, uh, down the road on an actual agenda format like this. Is, uh, I mean, are you saying that, Martin, the interim city manager is not available and, or just the actual next person we're going to potentially hire is not available? Like, I don't really see the logic in that. We have, for all intents and purposes, a city manager that, that signs checks that say city manager, so. And I mean, I don't want to talk like he's not in the room. I almost feel like an idiot now at this point, but we have a city manager. The city manager is filling that role in an interim basis and still, for all intents and purposes, the, the CEO of the city at this point, so. To not move forward on having an event based on someone who we might hire, doesn't seem like it makes much sense to me. I.
This isn't.
No, no, I can't want to clarify my point. I, I want to go ahead. It's not a debate. Mayor, they recognize the person you.
Calling you, Councilmember Bond. Councilmember Bond, the Mayor Protem.
Thanks. The role of the city manager is to implement the vision of the council. This retreat looks like a step towards us working as a body to figure out what our vision is. We have two new members. I'd like to hear what their thoughts are. This may just be a big step. This may not be the final retreat of the year. We do have some things coming down. We have a new city manager at some point. But I like the agenda and I like that. I, I'm looking forward to the opportunity of us just sort of getting to know each other a little bit and talking about our vision and finding out where four or more of us see this city going. Because we need to figure that out. We can't have seven individuals and then have a city manager come in and have seven different people trying to share what they think should be going on. It's four or more, and we need to figure out what that is, and this is a step towards doing.
Director Todd?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I agree with, uh, Councilmember Bond. To me, the agenda, the way we've laid it out, kind of sets us up. Now, in order for us to move forward this year, on any visions, we have to come together as a team, as a council, and decide what do we want to accomplish this year. And what we want to accomplish this year has nothing to do with who our city manager is, or who we were gonna hire, or who we do hire. What could we like to accomplish this year? And then I think having, as the city manager priorities for when they get started, I think this is helpful exercise for us to go through ourselves, to figure out, once we do have a city manager based on our priority, what do we want to make sure that that person, he or she, whom everything may be, is working towards? And so that we've got a clear vision from day one for them on where we want to go this year and what we want them to do to get us there. And I don't think we need to wait till May, June, July to come up with what our priorities are for the year. That's the half the year's over. We need to set some priorities as a team and see what's important to all of us and be ready to move forward.
Councilmembers, definitely.
First of all, just to clarify, never once said, didn't want to have a retreat, 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 want to have a retreat. I'm trying to make it very clear. I just wanted to suggest that maybe the agenda might have, we might have a dialogue about it, because I think what I would like to see us do is make sure we don't go into the weeds about what we want to accomplish about city issues. When in fact, the biggest issue here is, can we have the council, this is a lot, a lot, lines with Councilmember Bond was saying, we have two new council members. It might be a great idea to make, have this retreat, give the opportunity for the council to have an open dialogue about the issues that are facing our city. Not some of the city issues, but the, more of the, the, the visionary issues that are facing us. So that everyone gets a chance to speak, we get an idea of alignment, and we can get alignment as a council. It would be helpful to our new city manager coming in, and I don't want to wait till the city manager's hired. But I want to make sure that we don't get into, bogged down into some of the more, title's right, we're into the weeds of, of how we would run the city. Because that's something that, some, some of these particular items I saw on the agenda, I just wanted to clarify. We're going to be into particular actions of how we run the city. That's, that's something that's happening right now again from city manager. And the new city manager will take a lot of those on themselves. I think it's a great opportunity for the city and the city manager, as part of the city council, the city and the city council, to, to put together a retreat to align themselves on open dialogue about issues facing the city, and this could be a great tool for the new city manager when they come in. Where is the council at? Where's my, where's my, uh, city leadership team at? That's the kind of purpose I'd like to see for this retreat. That was my suggestion only. But I definitely want to see us go ahead and retreat. That was not the point. If we're saying I, I did not, I'm not doing it.
I, I think it's wonderful that we're doing a retreat. I had envisioned us getting to know each other, so I'm, you know, I feel, you know, very, um, I, since I have not been part of these, I'm willing and able to be, you know, led with how you guys think, you know, makes sense. I do. Um, I do like the idea, though, that, as we've been talking about schedules, um, not getting too, uh, like, not, not any presentations given to us, but more us, our conversations, more, you know, what are our, are, are, you know, if I can walk away, sorry, there's a lot of someone, if I can walk away from that day knowing this is how each of us feel about the city, what we're saying as the, uh, with the missions or, you know, all of those stars, all that, that we're all on board on the same page with that means. And even if not on each, I know what each other says. For me, that's a victory on that day of the retreat. So, um, I'm thankful that we're just putting it together and the earlier the better, so that hopefully we can have another retreat with our city manager and making this an opportunity. Thank you for that.
Well, Councilmember Allison?
Yeah, I just think it's healthy for us as a body to do that storming and norming and, and set the priorities from this group. Right, and with the directors of the, um, city government also participating. Think that that would be good information for a new city manager coming in, and then we'll have to get to know that new city manager too, right? So, you know, maybe an abbreviated workshop of some sort, so we can all get to know the city manager a little bit better, but I don't think it, from what I read in the agenda, I, I don't, I'm not worried enough having it before the city manager that will be the person placement has been identified or can participate, because this activity, we need it, and the city directors need it, so. Go forward with the workshop.
Am I just so the, the general consensus for the aligned agenda before us moving forward? So this is confirming date and body moderator. Okay. Uh, I will report back on Thursday after we have some more follow-up and try to figure out how we can make a calendar work. So, we have a call tomorrow to report back. So that is on to new business, which I am gee, is kind of all this. So, I know we're distracted, Todd.
Thank you. Presentation going here. Oops, new computer. Comes Joe to help. See if I can do it. We have a new computer, which is supposedly helping, but it's got, it's missing a mouse, so we're right there. If I do that, Joe, am I good? Okay, good. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council, city manager. Here we are once again. Now we are down finally to considering those resolutions and agreements we've been talking about for the last week or two. So I've taken the first six slides, it's down to one, but if anybody out there's listening hasn't heard the story, remember what we're doing. It's our current contract with Snohomish Regional Fire and Rescue Surfer, the old district seven. It expires at the end of two thousand twenty-two. So we've done a lot of work to look at other ways to find fire EMS at the best price for our citizens. We found that the citizen.
For some reason, that's sharing.
Sharing the wrong one. They can. The, the slideshow was messed up. It's different. There's some sound issues with the new. It's the best we're gonna get, folks. Sorry. Go ahead, Mike. Okay, thanks. I'm checking. So Barb Heidel, can you hear me out there? There's a head nod. Okay, that's good. We're a good thing. So remember, our fire services are changing. The least expensive option was for annexation to South County Fire. And so the vote to do that, we have to vote to get into South County Fire, and so the timing is such that the vote needs to be at a special election in April to have it in effect by August first, which gives the county time to redraw all the lines for how they assess taxes for, starting in two thousand twenty-three. So what we're talking about is ending, ending surfer as our provider at the end of this year, two thousand twenty-two, and starting with South County Fire in two thousand twenty-three. They've amended their plan. They have a thing called RFA plans, required for them to have an RFA plan. They've amended that. They did that back in December. Uh, and that kind of sets the conditions. It says, if the vote is positive, Mill Creek would be added into the jurisdictional boundary and gets added into a lot of other things. And then we've also said, well, if we don't have annexation happen at that first, uh, election opportunity, we need to have a certain, a short-term interim safety net contract, we've been calling it. So that is also part of what we're talking about here. And now the buttons don't.
Hey, Mike, if you want to hit display settings and then, uh, switch your display, it should go to full screen.
There, there's a generational difference here. What you just, difference, what you just said is not possible. Thank you, Laurel.
Yeah, that, that's incorrect. I checked it out. This is the best we can do tonight. Sorry, everyone.
Okay, thank you. I think I figured it out. So here we go. So anyway, so the first one, um, let me back up. So the steps, annexation process is specified by the RCW, the, the grant has helped us work through. Staff from Mill Creek and South County Fire have worked on all of the agreements that are required. We've been talking about those. There are three agreements. We'll, we'll run through them tonight. They were in final draft form last week. Nobody had any substantive changes on those. We've made a few little typographical error changes, and you've seen those over the last week. There's a lot of flurry about changing those, but nothing substantive has changed. Uh, we thought South County Fire was gonna be adopting those last week. It turns out they're adopting them tonight. So an hour from now, they'll be taking the same measure up, and so they are exactly parallel with what we're doing, uh, tonight. So tonight, we'll be considering and adopting those resolutions to adopt those agreements, and we'll also have an opportunity to, uh, adopt that budget plan we've talked about. Budget plan that says you're gonna intend to collect less property taxes next year. So first big plan, RFA plan, we mentioned that. It's required by statute to adopt the high-able plan, addresses its boundaries, governance, funding, staffing, and services. They've amended that. City must approve that in its identical form, so we very carefully got exactly the form between the one you're, the one you seen your pack at the night is exactly what, when they've adopted. And as one result of that, I wanted to point out here, again, we've talked about this in a couple, last couple of weeks, we have a non-voting seat until they redistrict. Now, the way the redistricting works is, the next time they have an election, which for them would be two thousand twenty-three for any of their fire commissioners, before that election happens, they have to redistrict. So if you think about it, that's gonna be a, a August primary and a November general. So you guys would all sign up for spots like a May. So they've got to get the redistricting done before that. After that redistricting is done, then if we are in district two or four, the way it's set up right now, Mill Creek citizens would have an opportunity to run for those seats. The at-large seats, we've talked about, those happen to be up in two thousand twenty-seven. They have six-year terms, but the opportunities to start being on that, on their board of commissioners would commence in two thousand twenty-three. That redistricting, not known, but we, they talked to us, will probably either be in one or two districts when it happens. The next big agreement we've been talking about is if the annexation goes through, you got a lot of details on how you do the timing and the switch over. Before annexation hap, actually happens, this agreement only takes effect if the voters approve the annexation. Provides for services, particularly during that transition period, we've talked about the effective date of the annexation is gonna be August first, but surfer still is contractually required to provide us services from August first through December thirty-first this year. And so the two agencies would work together to transition that during that time. This talks about that. And it also talks about us purchasing and transferring Station Seventy-Six to them as part of the goods and services that we bring into the RFA to join them. The other, if the annexation doesn't pass this first bite, then we have the interim service contract that talks about the pricing and conditions on which they would provide fire services in two thousand twenty-three, and then two thousand twenty-four, if the annexation failed again. Uh, and the service in two thousand twenty-four is conditioned all the way through. We've got to keep trying to annex, otherwise we don't get this deal. That's what that second bullet is about. Service beyond two thousand twenty-four, we've talked about that, require new agreements, too, too hard to predict out there. We're all hopeful that we would be annexed by that time. Throughout, if we annex, we've got the same level of services we have today by the nature of their cover of service, their cover of, what do you call it, uh, service? Mark, can you help me? I can't remember this. Cover? Yeah, not to be, hey, I apologize. I can't remember their official term. It's the, the cover, there's, their standards of service for cover is saying, it would be the same as what we have today, but I'm sorry, I'm bumbling that, but it's. Yeah, and so it results in the staffing level and apparatus is the same. So fundamentally, twenty-four, seven, we'll have five people in Station Seventy-Six, just as we do today. That's the point. It, under the interim service contract, they would use Station Seventy-Six as an, as in, as is condition. They've looked at that, said it's gonna work for them. They are not gonna make any capital improvements if we're in a short-term contract situation. And they provide, we, uh, we're gonna provide the station. We don't really have any equipment or apparatus or vehicles, and so they've got plans for providing that. And I'm hopeful, hopeful that still, the sound's still working for folks out there. Barb Heidel, is that still working? There was a little buzz here. Okay, thank you. So the next one is a budget plan applied annexation. We've been talking about this. It's how do we change our city budget if we annex into the fire district? Because we no longer will have that contract payment. So this is very specifically talking about that, about four point three million dollars we're spending in two thousand twenty-two for our contract. It's been paid out general fund sources. In the future, you are making a commitment or intention to reduce the property tax. to reduce the property tax by $2.6 million and let the levy go away. The EMS levy go away, which is 1.7, 1.7, 2.6 is the 4.3. And so it'll be confusing. Somebody had a question. They didn't see the budget plan is one of the things you're going to talk about tonight. Well, it's embodied in a thing called the resolution of intent to reduce property tax. So you'll see that tonight. That's the budget plan is kind of what are you going to do with affect a budget? It's going to be through your intent to reduce the property tax. There is the language there. If you want, if people want to know that it's there, that's what you're going to be signing off on tonight. If you choose to do so, intend to reduce the 2023 property tax levy by 2.6 million. So instead of having whatever it was last year, plus the 1% you might think about taking plus new AV that would come into the district, you're going to take 2.6 off of that because 2.6 is the money you would have spent on fire. And so you're intending to take that 2.6 away from what you would have cost would have charged otherwise. And the 1.7 from EMS levy will naturally expire because that levy only goes through the end of 2022. So for tonight, you're going to adopt resolutions. The first one is approving the RFA plan and says you're seeking annexation. The second one will be approving the pre annexation agreement and the backup interim service service agreement. So that's a pair of those together. If if the vote is positive, you need pre annexation. If it's negative, you need the interim services contract. And the third one is that plan for reducing property tax. Also going to have you ask and get done with that. I'm going to have you look at the draft resolutions for placing the measure on the ballot. So that is your official thing. We're talking about that doing that next week. A resolution that says you want to place it on a special election ballot for April 22nd. Give me April 26th, 2022. And we'll also see the language goes in the ballot title and explanatory language. So we'll run that through that tonight. Go ahead.
One day I need to mention that the outside can we have unanimous consent to add Mike's referring to this now, but the one of the motions we need unanimous consent to add to the agenda consideration per setting a special meeting for next week. Yes, that is the intent of what the motion will be, but we neglected to get that added on to the agenda. Go through the resolution.
Yeah, I think I've just. Yeah, thank you. So whoops. Boy, that was it's sensitive touchpad. Here we go. Okay, so this is the first one to consider. Is that adopting our the South County Fire amended RFA plan in exactly the same form as they have it? And the second part of that resolution is is to seek annexation into the fire district. So that is a proposed motion for resolution 2022-626. I guess I should ask if there's any questions before we move to those. Excuse me. Yes, conclusion of the staff report on the three resolutions we're going to pass. Consider, excuse me. Thank you.
I want to be presented. Okay, so are there any questions regarding the resolution before us for Director Doc? I see any questions?
On that basis, I'll make first motion.
Okay.
Make the motion to approve to adopt resolution 2022-626 approving annexation in the city of Mill Creek into the South Snohomish County Fire and Rescue Regional Fire Authority and approving the amendments to the South Snohomish Fire and Rescue Regional Fire Authority Plan.
Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you, Mayor. Here's the second one is 2022-627, adopting the pre annexation agreement and the interim service contract.
Motion to adopt resolution 2022-627, approving the pre annexation interlocal agreement and interlocal agreement for spring provision of fire and emergency medical services. Snohomish County Fire and Rescue Regional Fire Authority and City of Mill Creek, Washington.
Second, we have a motion. The second, is there any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I saw a question down there. It's hard to see him. She's through the glass.
I just realized if someone watching this later and they just see us approving these things without any discussion, there might be some confusion. I just wanted to say we have been discussing this multiple times for the last couple of months. And that's why, you know, we are doing it this way. I wanted it to be public record. So someone doesn't just watch on YouTube in two weeks and go, wow, they're just willing to do this so quickly and no discussion. Yeah, yes.
I think we have consensus. This is the most beaten horse.
On online and so people are writing this. So I just wanted to put that on the record to make sure that's coming out. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Is there any further discussion regarding resolution 2022-627? Here you're seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Resolution is passed seven to zero.
The next one we have is a resolution to adopt that budget plan to reduce the general fund tax levy for 2023 and let EMS levy expire.
Motion to in 2022 expressing the city councils intention to reduce the city's property tax levy in the event of annexation into the South Snohomish County Fire and Rescue Regional Fire Authority to prove second.
Any further discussion on proposed motion, resolution 2022-628? In none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion, resolution passes seven to zero. And that brings us to the scheduling of the meeting for next week.
Yeah. So let me talk a little, give you a little bit of presentation on what we're going to do next week before you decide to do it. So February 15th, a special meeting agenda is going to be very short. Council action will tend to have an opportunity to consider and take action on the resolution that places the annexation on the ballot. And that has really a couple of parts to it. It's requesting the county elections place the measure on that special elections ballot. And it includes the explanatory statement, the ballot title, title language. So let me show those to you. So resolutions itself looks like this. You can read that if you want to. It's in the packet, but basically says you would like to have a special election. And has the following ballot title, the ballot title is this what a voter would see as the question. And I apologize. The language effective August 1st, 2022 needs to appear after the word authority and before per Mill Creek City Council resolution. I don't dare touch that touchpad. It'll go crazy on me. But I apologize. It is in your, it is in the resolution itself. It's in your packet. I just didn't get in the slides. My apologies there. It doesn't really change nature. We just want to make it clear that's the date. So this is the ballot title. This is what you would see and the ballot that voters are asked to vote yes or no on that. And then the explanatory statement, this is the city's opportunity to give the factual information, 200 word maximum. We very carefully used all 200 words. And this is the the language that we think tells the best gives the best explanation for why we're doing this and what it means to the voter. This is separate from the pro and con committee statements. Remember you see the ballot title and you see explanatory statements. Sometimes that's all you see. Other times you see explanatory or other arguments from the pro and con committees. So this is the 200 words you'd see there. Of course, we'd fill in the resolution you just passed tonight. Or the resolution we will pass next week for that. And then down at the bottom, more information is available at citymillcreek.com. We have a slash buyer, I think, because there's your shortcut to get you right to the page. It has a bunch of FAQs and other information. So the people who had questions when they were reading the ballot and said 200 words is enough, but I'd like to know some more, we'd like bring them to a very robust page of information.
So Mike, would the ballot title and the explanatory statement be part of the resolutions that we'll consider approving next week?
Yeah, the resolution itself includes that resolution, this language here, that's the resolution you would adopt. And it says, look, last words there is with the following potential ballot title, then the next page is this.
I just want to make clear that we're not considering the resolutions that we passed tonight. It's going to be a new resolution.
This is the new, yeah, this is the new resolution and this is the ballot title and the resolution says per exhibit one has this and exhibit one is those. So we turn in after you, if you chose to pass that resolution next week, we would then turn in the ballot title and explanatory statement and pro and con committee things are the three things that we have to provide to the county order to get on the ballot. That kind of makes sense.
We have, we have an obligation to to advertise for a con committee, correct? Local papers, please turn this.
Yeah. So we did that last week. We're asking pros and cons. It was in there. We'll probably do it again tomorrow. I'll come to that in a second here, but yeah, we're and we got a deadline of February 16th. I think that's my next slide here. Oh, actually, here's that. So the mayor spoke to us earlier. We recommend that you have a special meeting next week just to do this one thing. If the council had other business, they could also do that. Remember for a special meeting, you got to set that agenda ahead of time. You can't change it. So the proposal is to have just this one topic. Grant is advising, it's okay to do that by by video conferencing. Like many city councils are still doing, you just, there's not, doesn't make a lot of sense to assemble down here. We can do it just as well. And so the suggestion is that motion, if you, if someone cared to discuss it or make that.
Eric, on that, on that basis, I would make the motion to schedule a special meeting for Tuesday, February 15th, 2022 via video conferencing for the purpose of considering taking action on a resolution calling for the special election concerning annexation into the South Snohomish Fire County Fire Rescue Regional Fire Authority.
Any discussion?
Just with caveat that everyone knows it's remote.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions?
Very good. So after the 15th, then what happens next? We are not done. There's still more more laps to run in this race. So February 22nd, give you heads up. That is the opportunity or that will be the time at which you as a council take the names that have come to you by a deadline of next or when Wednesday, February 16th at noon, we're looking at those pro and con committees. You'll make a selection of those and name those at the February 22nd meeting because those need to be adopted by council. And those need to go in by the end of that week. You will also have an opportunity to authorize the city manager to start the process to acquire Station 76 from surfer. Remember, we've talked about that. That's already specified in our contract with surfer. A lot of it's already prescribed, but it needs the city manager's signature to start some of those processes of getting the title documents done and inspections done, those kinds of things. We need to have that station. No matter what happens, either way, we need to have the station by August 1st. And so it's not a race, but it's going to be kind of tight. So we want to get that started on the 22nd if possible. And then we talked about it before. Grant talked about the things you can and can't do as a council. You individually and the staff have to all be very careful about only giving factual information, but you have the opportunity on the 22nd, if you care to, to hold a public hearing and consider a a motion or a resolution to say you endorse or don't endorse the thing you just put on the ballot. And I recommend that you at least consider doing that. We don't have to decide tonight, but that is something you should consider. I guess the presumption is staff is going to continue on the presumption. You might like to do that, but you can decide whether you'd like to carry that on or not. I think that does help us in terms of communicating to the public that the council feels this way instead of you as individuals of being able to speak to this measure.
So this will be on our agenda for the 22nd.
For the 22nd. Yeah, those those three things.
Mayor.
We have to note the public hearing building.
Yeah, we will note a public hearing for that. Yeah.
Go ahead, Mr. Deckinger. Go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to say, Mayor, and I think Councilmember Cavalieri was probably going to be saying this as well. Given the number of days we need to provide notice ahead of time for the public hearing, it would be helpful to get an indication if council would like to do that on the 22nd. So the noticing process can be done in a timely manner.
Yes.
Okay, so we'll proceed with that basis. We'll note that there's a special meeting for the 22nd. Council have an opportunity to consider that. You don't have to devote for it. We have a chance to consider it and adopt that.
Why would it need to be a special?
Excuse me, I misspoke. A public hearing, public hearing, my fault. Thank you. I think that brings us to the end of this. Thank you for your attention. Thank you for your action. Appreciate it. We're getting closer to the end. I can almost see the end of this. Thanks to Karen for doing a lot of this work in the background. Thanks for for Grant to Grant for rust hustling around. Get a lot of these little details working. It's complicated.
Okay, that brings us to state grants of $88,200 for construction expenses to Silvercrest Park Rehabilitation Project.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council. Good morning, good evening. Sorry, I'm already on to tomorrow. I went, thank you for the opportunity to present on this project. This is a new capital project that we are getting started this year. It was a project that we finalized approval in the 21, 2021 CIP update. This particular presentation tonight is to take care of a last piece of scoping stage business, which is the approval of the state grant funds that are were secured for this project for construction purposes. So that's my purpose here this evening. I just want to touch on a couple of points, just current status. This will be an abbreviated status because I anticipate coming back to present to City Council. When I want to talk about the design contract that we're currently negotiating with this project. To summarize for you, the state grant, the activities that led up to where we are today. Again, kind of refresh you on the project funding and expense commitment status, which is I'm trying to make a standard part of all my capital projects, presentations to the city council and then proposed motion for a resolution. So first off, the Silvercrest Park Rehabilitation Project is a project that is intended to repair and refresh some of the elements of Silvercrest Park that have deteriorated due to age and overtime. And also to look at opportunities to bring the park more in line with current ADA standards. This was a capital project in the 2021-26 Capital Improvement Plan. We did some updates to the project title, scope and funding that was approved by council in December 2021 for our update. And we are, as I mentioned before, currently negotiating the design contract with our preferred consultant to begin design work during the spring of this year. To summarize a little bit about the state capital appropriations grant, we applied for a state capital appropriation in the 2021-2023 state capital budget. We were awarded that grant on June 21st of last year. That award was in the amount of $88,200. The state always takes a little piece out of whatever it awards us. So the the actual grant was for 90,000, 88,200 is what the state approves for our use. That state grant is limited to construction expenses only. We did take that into account when we budgeted the project for the CIP update. The state, we did complete the state required readiness survey and the state required cultural resources reviews during November and through January of this year. Those included in brief compliance with Governor's Order 2102, which is required whenever we plug state capital funds into a local project. And that includes a combination of a historical review and an outreach to the local Native American tribes with interest to see if they want to consult at all on this project. We did all those things. There was no interest on any part consulting with the project because the project is limited to repair only work on the park. Because this is the nature of the grant, the grant agreement actually comes from the state, Washington State Department of Commerce. And so technically we are signing a grant with the Department of Commerce for this or the agreement for the grant. So to summarize the expenses, and this is just reprising from what you were shared with back in December, we have now finalized all three funding sources for this project. We have local funds. We have Snohomish County Park Grant Funds and we have state capital appropriation grants for a total project budget of $350,000. And so the next step that we are going right now is working up the final scope and working up the design contract so that we can actually move forward with design work. So with that, what we've proposed and recommended for the city council to consider is to, if you wish, adopt a resolution. And this is the resolution provided in your packet. But basically as follows, the interim city manager is authorized to execute the grant agreement with the State of Washington Department of Commerce for state capital appropriation grant funds awarded to the city of Mill Creek for the construction of the Silvercrest Park Rehabilitation Project. Can I answer any questions for any of you? Can I answer any questions for any of you?
Councilmember Cavalier.
I don't have any questions, Mayor. Sorry, Mayor, I don't have a question, but, uh, just a quick comment that, that there's a couple of us up here that have, um, for a couple of years now been peddling this project, myself, Mayor Pro Tem, and Councilmember UK on the other end of the dais, and it's really exciting that we're going to get to, uh, finally see this project come to fruition in Silvercrest, it, it is probably the most neglected park, uh, in our, in our arsenal. Uh, also recognized Director Todd, in his work in the beginning stages of this, he also was an advocate for this. And here we are today about to pass the resolution, and I would ask, uh, Councilmember UK, my co-chair on Parks Board now, to, uh, maybe give us the honors.
Intake motion. Twenty twenty-two sixteen.
Frank, can you go back one slide?
Of course.
See, I wasn't ready for that. So I move that, uh, to authorize the interim city manager to execute the grant agreement with the State of Washington Department of Commerce for state capital creation grant funds awarded to the city of Mill Creek for the construction of Silvercrest Park Rehabilitation Project, uh, twenty-twenty-one, sixteen twenty-one.
Twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty-two, sixteen twenty-one. Two nine.
Second.
Six two nine.
Is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any questions? The resolution is passed seven to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Frank. Okay, that brings us to item F, request for approval of ordinance approving the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two paying classification plans and changes to authorized positions. With, uh, by S. Director.
All right, so tonight we are looking at an ordinance to amend the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two budget. And this is just to include an updated salary schedule to reflect the two percent and three and a half percent wage increases that was approved at the February first council meeting. So along with that, we have been looking at how the city wants to start moving forward as we look toward the recovery phase from COVID. So, um, leadership has talked a bit, and we are looking at what we can accomplish before the next budget cycle begins. And we do feel that an HR director, or I'm sorry, an HR manager, a staff accountant and a maintenance worker are three additional positions that would help staff, um, function at, um, a higher level. And then we are looking at adjusting a title and a pay grade for our support services, uh, police support services technician, and then a job title to accurately reflect job duties for a planning and development services manager. So all of these positions, we do, uh, have room in our current budget, so we're not looking for any additional budget authority. We are looking to offset any kind of expenses with our current authority uh, in the general fund and in the stormwater utility fund. Does anyone have any questions on the new positions or the ordinance?
Councilmember UK.
I can't believe that we haven't had these positions, and it's amazing the work that, um, the staff that has to take on. I was incredibly excited to see this, um, when it was on the agenda, so thank you for all your hard work.
Just to, so the record is clear on the human resources, we did have this position, the former city manager elected, we less in contract even now. We decided that that's not the best way to go, so we're going back to full contact.
Yes, I understand, I remember when, uh, that, I, I couldn't believe that that change was made then, so it's exciting to see it now.
Any, uh, further comment or questions? Okay, seeing none.
Mayor, I'll go ahead and make a motion, uh, request for approval of ordinance two zero two two, is it six seven, six three zero? Providing the two zero two one, two zero two two paying classification plans and changes to the authorized positions.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? The ordinance is passed seven to zero. Okay, that brings us to the consent agenda. I M G, approval of checks number six four three one one through six four three seven one. And the ACH wire transfers in the amount of four hundred twenty-six thousand nine hundred forty-five dollars and fifty cents. The audit committee was Councilmember Cavalier and myself, were there any exceptions?
No exceptions.
No exceptions? I M H, payroll and benefit ACH payments in the amount of one hundred eighty-three thousand four hundred fifty-two dollars and five cents, any exceptions?
No exceptions.
No exceptions, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda is approved, okay. Um, onto reports, from our report, three things, uh, one is we have our regular mayor county executive, I'll report back on that in two weeks. Uh, second is some exciting news, I'll turn over to Director Todd here in a second. Uh, I got a call probably after lunch on Thursday afternoon from Representative Berg indicating that they have found a way to reopen the capital budget to make between two hundred and five hundred thousand dollars available to the city of Mill Creek. And so that led to discussions with Mayor Pro Tem and I and, uh, acting city manager and Director Todd, and is resulting in a request that has been submitted to the state for four hundred thousand dollars, and I'll turn over to Director Todd to talk about the specifics.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, it was, uh, past and serious again, trying to do this along with everything else. What we did, we put in for two hundred thousand dollars on our DRCC project. Remember, we had put, uh, we're all put in the budget for dollars to have us continue our planning, working with probably a landscape architect, planners and engineers to say, what is the actual development capacity of a DRCC? Uh, how could we, uh, phase out some of the dreams that we had in what would be, uh, kind of checking back for community needs and, uh, partner we might work with? So we put that in as a planning request, and hopefully that will go through. Representative Berg felt that would, would, uh, score decently, and so we're hopeful we'll get that kind of money. The second project we looked at other, in terms of, uh, looking at something else that was gonna, going to happen, going to happen in the near term. Uh, the city had a commitment for repairing the worn-out library, you may have heard about this a little bit, we put eighty thousand dollars in our or, this is coming and going.
You might want to move to the other mic, we're, we're missing every other word.
Thank you, is that one working better? That's not on. Okay. That worked, okay. Yeah, so the second one was for the library, we had a commitment to repair the fourth floor, the library was built in nineteen ninety-one, and a lot of plywood in the back half of that building, three thousand square feet, it was getting kind of spongy, it wasn't going to kill anybody, it was going to fall through the floor. But we discovered it was not a water problem, it just needed to be reinforced and redone. That's forty, fifty, sixty thousand bucks worth of work, but once you do that, you gotta replace the carpet. So the library had a project to, uh, add to, uh, repairing the carpet and some other things. Uh, I had the idea that says, let's talk to, talk to work and talk to, um, library about this, and so there, they helped put in a joint proposal that would be under our name for two hundred thousand dollars to get the money for that basic work, and it's going to allow them to possibly go and up update their HVAC system, change to more accessible bathrooms, fix the ADA accessible door, a bunch of things, they didn't have those things scheduled out because they didn't have money, but this is an opportunity to add on to this project, and they, they think they can get it done in time. So we've also put in a request for two hundred thousand dollars for that project. Only the part that would be our responsibility would come out of our part of that, but this is kind of, it's money that's coming from the state for the betterment of the whole area. We put both those projects for good, because they're not just for Mill Creek, they kind of, Mill Creek, the library here goes to a lot of folks. And so it felt like it was a good thing for the forty-fourth district overall, so, uh, April Berg and, uh, I'm going to get it wrong, is it Donahue or Don? Donnie, yeah, Brandon Donahue here, our new representative, are sponsoring those, and we'll also get Senator Levick to, to turn in on those, and hopefully those will be awarded through the capital budget update process. Questions?
Uh, this was positive news, it was kind of a firestorm, we came about, but I think we're developing a good relationship with the record. And then again, hopefully with some more active planning on our part will be positions and take advantage of more things like this in the coming sessions. So, uh, this is great, Councilmembers, check.
Hi, kudos to you all, that's, that's great news, um, just a suggestion, so if we have this opportunity again in the future, something we should look at is, I know we talked about this in the past, said when these windfalls come down, it's usually a great idea if we can go to our CIP budget and see something that's currently on our CIP that if you take a half million dollar windfall and take it away, take a half million dollars off of the city's budget and use the, the county's cash, that's, that's a real windfall for the, the city. Maybe what we need to do is take a look at putting more items on the CIP that could maybe fall into this kind of a category. That, uh, you know, something maybe add to our retreat is that the possible topic is, are we thinking about possible windfalls like this, because I know this is asked a couple of times where you've had to scramble, Mike, at the very last minute of time get some, get some cash and get these grants done. Just about.
I did consider that, what's complicated more is this is a off-year budget, so it's amending the existing budget. So this is money that will be made available, it has to be spent by mid-year next year. So it makes it more complicated for just pulling a project off the CIP, because we may may not, may not be able to get all that money spent before the money has to be spent.
Then we have CIP projects of what, years?
Yeah, but in this case, this is money, this is a mid-year, mid-cycle deal, that's the problem. This is halfway through their capital budget cycle, you just saw that Frank just got you guys to accept the money we got a year ago. It takes a long time to get state money lined up, so this is going to be a race to get that money in, get through all of the various hoops we have to jump through, but the library feels they could do it all by expanding that project. The project, because it's a planning project, doesn't have a lot of those same risk requirements, but is it LEED certified? We don't have to do that kind of thing, it's a planning project.
But John, to your point, I think for the long sessions, every other year, they adopt a new budget, we need to make sure that we're positioned with those projects on the CIP. So we're in a position to act quickly when we have two years to use them.
Exactly, yeah. Our challenge right now is we've got projects on our CIP, a lot of them are not very exciting. They're called repaving roads and repaving sidewalks. And our challenge is going to be how to get those ready to go when there's funding available, and also look at things that are attractive to the state or the county to, for money, yeah, thanks.
Councilmember UK.
With projects like this, knowing our funding is coming in and, and, uh, is there anything that residents, is there, should they be writing to our representatives, tell them how excited they are for this project? Is that something, um, that when people ask, especially in the library, I mean, I, I go to the library two times a week, I actually showed my son the, um, we walked on that part, and I explained to him, this is one of the things that, like, City Council does, when I was explaining, you know, coming with funding, one of those kind of like lessons, and, and, um, I just, I'm just intrigued, how can, how, how can those who want to do something, do something, or can they not?
I, I think in a normal cycle, like the mayor hit it, and Councilmember Sekler hit on it too, I think when we get in a position where you say, here is a new thing we want to do out of our DRCC master plan, and we're really excited about this feature, then we can take testimonials from the public and put those in the grant request that says, here's why we want to do this. And that helps support it, because there's competitive down there, this time, uh, Mayor of the airport, ten probably know more. This is kind of a last minute, I think they've got extra revenue coming in because things are going better than what they thought they were, and they got arable money or whatever. So this is unusual to jam extra money in, so it's interesting, the deadline was January twenty-eighth, and we turned it to today. And that's okay, so I think this is, uh, a backdoor, I don't mean that, right? It, it's, it's a after-the-fact kind of thing, so in this case, we can thank our representatives, if we do get the money, that'd be great to, to thank them for looking out for us, because we wouldn't have known about this if they wouldn't have said, call, called the mayor, Mayor Pro Tem up and said, hey, I got some money, quick, we're working this weekend, figure out where to put it, give us a, a name for it on Friday, and give us paperwork by Tuesday at five, so that's what we did.
Okay, any other questions or comments on that? So again, good work. Appreciate all the efforts. The other thing I, I've been debating whether to bring this up, but I need to bring it up. It's a little bit of a gripe in request. A couple of weeks ago, we had a very spirited discussion on Mill Creek suburb. And we're going to have many more years, year and a half ahead. And some of you know, I started a self-imposed rule two or three years ago, stop reading local publications, because it doesn't mean no good, it just causes me to lose sleep. And I broke that rule. And I was surprised when I read an article in one of the publications, it said, we are considering adding fifteen hundred low-income apartments in the Mill Creek suburb. And I began wondering, did I miss a meeting? Because I don't remember that discussion. I mean, I think, I wanted to look at the advisory committee's recommendation. The recommendation was not to add low-income housing. It was not to add apartments. It was to allow mixed use in a portion of the sub-area on the west side and north side of Mill Creek Boulevard that would have commercial with residential or retail and/or retail above. So, and I bring this up mainly because everyone knows this is a very sensitive subject in our city, and it's, we're going to have many spirited discussions about this, and we may not end up agreeing. But as the saying goes, we're entitled to our opinions, but we're not entitled to our own facts. And we have important discussions to have amongst ourselves for our community, and it's important to me that we're all singing off the same sheet of music, the same set of facts. So we may at the end of the day have different opinions, but I hope we can keep it to the facts, so that we don't just say things to incite emotions, um, which, when the facts aren't necessarily true. So I just want to make sure the record is clear. The advisory committee has not made any recommendations about the income level or the type of housing. It made a recommendation to allow mixed use, that could include resident that could include up to fifteen hundred low units. Period. So going forward, I just ask, let's be careful with the facts we use and statements we make. Sometimes it's unintentional, sometimes it may not be, but, um, to have these important discussions, we need to try to make sure we're accurate with the facts, so there, I've said my piece. Um, Mayor Pro Tem, do you have any reports today?
I do, Mayor, thank you. Um, first, I didn't jump in a few minutes ago on the discussion, but I do want to thank Councilmember Sekler and the rest of you who tried to jump in for jumping on my bandwagon that I've been beating for the past couple of years regarding the need for us to make sure we have plenty of projects, um, approved and in order on the CIP. So that when we do have opportunities for funding, that we're getting out there, we're getting that funding for those. So I just want to, want to thank all of you for, um, jumping on with me on that. Also, I want to thank Representatives Berg and Donahue for looking out for the city of Mill Creek and reaching out to us in regards to that funding, because this is funding that we can really use, and I really appreciate them for bringing that to us. Also, I had a helpful meeting this evening, um, just want to report that, um, the, um, we had a lot of discussion, that the, one of the main takeaways that the cases are dropping, um, of COVID, and also the number of people seeking a test have dropped dramatically, so, um, for everyone. Also, I want to report that the RFPs for the city manager search firm are due tomorrow. So, and our committee is planning on getting together Friday to, uh, go over the RFPs that have turned in, um, and get back with the council on those. Also, I want to bring up one more time, and, um, going back to our, um, density, I just want to remind everyone again that, um, they are taking up House Bill seventeen eight-two regarding the mandatory density regulation, um, and AWC is asking that, um, all first reach out to their representatives, um, and let them know that, um, AWC's cases, they're actually against it. For some, a couple of reasons, um, one being, um, blanket zoning does not solve housing problems for all the cities. They want to make sure that the cities are able to come to the table and have more of a say-so. And this would take away some of the city's actual ability to come to And this would take away some of the city's actual ability to come to the table and set their own density policy. So I do urge my council members to all look at that and reach out. About that based on conversation. I think that there are many people up here that have some. About that. So that's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Vaughn, any more?
No report, but I'd like to see if there's three others or more of you that would be in favor of giving staff some directions, specifically Joe and IT. To seek out some improvements to our obviously dysfunctional sound system. We had public input and we've experienced it ourselves. And I'd be in favor of opera as a staff to move forward with finding some solutions and bringing them before us if, if there's a majority of you. Thank you.
I, I think you're, Barton, can we talk about that Thursday? Because it's been something we've been talking about since we started getting the federal funds in two thousand twenty. So we will take it up on Thursday. Councilmember Stabler.
Only one item on my report. I think we all received, you know, the concerns citizen regarding the noise level of, of the individual that was. Playing their instruments outside of Safeway and Staples, blasting noise. And claiming that, that my concern was the individual said that they have not getting any response from the city whatsoever. And that they have requested that, you know, this is their fourth or fifth time that they have complained and that this. This, the police, the complaint, the police, the police have said it, have not responded and said, there's nothing they can do. I'm just wanting to say, please look into this and they were copied also on this email as all of us were. And the interim police chief, they could please report back to us at the next meeting just to give us a date so that. Those of us on council who are copied on this could respond as we have the individual's name. Just, we know what's going on.
Martin, since we don't meet for two weeks, could you work on the next few days with the acting chief, Aaron Chief, write a report of some sort and where, what would.
Sure, no problem. Thank you.
Councilmember Cavalier, any more?
Thank you, Mayor. I was going to comment about the sound system. So thank you, Councilmember Vaughn for bringing that up. And I would add. To the mayor's point that we do have existing, existing ARPA funds. And we talked about utilizing those. I say sooner rather than later. Ms. Heidel's point, she was spot on. Second is. Just a generic statement to pickleball fans out there that pickleball is coming. It's in the process. It's in the works. It's in the works on a more revitalization plan with existing courts and on a grander scale as well. I believe on March one in that, that meeting that Tuesday will expand on it from Parks Board and Scott Harder. So please be patient with us. We're trying. Our representatives are working with us as well. And it's an exciting time. Thank you.
Councilmember Rouse, your report. Councilmember DK.
Yes, what Councilmember Cavalier just said was actually part of my report. I had the pleasure of attending the Parks Board meeting this past week, which it felt like home. I missed them and it'd only been two months since I had last attended. It was great to hear about all the projects the youth advisory board has going on. We're so incredibly lucky to have them. Just a note for everyone that their applications for the next year are going. So if you happen to know any high school age students who it would be a good fit, please encourage them. To look into it and to, to talk to them. They're all very wonderful. It was also great to hear about the priorities. That the Parks Board are continuing to work through. I won't discuss them because they actually have plans on coming here to city council to discuss the, to discuss them and. And, and do presentations. And I'm really, I'm really glad to, to, to see that process and a special shout out to. Bridget, the chair, and Tannis, the co-chair. I think they're doing just a fantastic job. But it was also a wonderful opportunity to see Scott Harder come, communications and marketing coordinator, doing, doing what he does. It was just really great to see what Councilmember Cavalier said about. The ball, about all the hard work that he's been handling, you know, coordinating with our, our state reps, with city, with the, with Parks and Rec Board. It was just, we were very fortunate to. To have him. And I just wanted to do that little shout out to them and to Scott. So thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I apologize. I did forget one item I was supposed to mention. Very quick announcement. The Arts Communication Board want me to make a announcement again that there is an open position on the Arts Communication Board. They are looking for applicants. It's posted on our website. If you're interested, please take a look at the website for more information. But. Interested, we'd really like to have one more person there to fill the board out.
Acting City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. A few items on here. One, I apologize, is not on here. We'll have an update by our chief of police regarding the lateral candidates. The first report that I have for you is in your packet there, you have a copy of the teleworking policy. A little bit of history on that. We had one employee a few months back inquire about. Working remotely. This, this person that came into one of our directors, striking the concern that. There's a need. We, we thought there might be a good, better work life balance and this applies to not just this person, but also a policy that would. Span the entire city. So we put together a, thanks to our legal team, a teleworking policy that would be added to our existing personnel manual. Today's report, just to give you an idea what that is, sometime can reflect on it if you have any questions. Now or before we send through a resolution next week. To, to bring up those questions. We believe that although there, you know, there are limitations of this as well, leadership will also address those and approaches on improvement manner going forward. As we determine eligibility for any employees that get the telec, can give. Research to show that employees can reduce costs of working for an employer, personnel costs. And also this provides a lot of flexibility on the advantageous side. So. It's just for your opportunity to review and as we will, we'll have a resolution to see your approval on that. With that, I'll take any questions.
I'm sorry. Well, we, we talked about it's not an amendment to the handbook, which would be done by the city manager. Instead, we amended to the personnel policy, which we blessed a few years ago and it was updated. So that's why we decided we should just bring it back to the council.
The next time I want to thank both our city clerk, Downey, for putting his together last minute. This wasn't planned, but I think it's important to announce. A little bit of progress that we made up today at four thirty, actually. No, add our chief of police. I'll hand it over to him. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. Good evening, Council, Mayor Protem, Mayor. I wanted to just give you a quick update on the hiring process that we're going through right now. Last reported to you that you were successfully able to complete a lateral oral board on the twenty seventh of last month. Exciting news today is that we did have a civil service meeting this afternoon, commission meeting. And we were able to get a certified list of three more additional lateral candidates approved. And so thank you to Ms. Fay and Mr. Degenger and the commission for making that meeting happen. This was a special meeting. So a lot of like quick work went into it. So I appreciate your help. As well as the commission. So that's good news. And, and secondly, if I may, I would like to discuss or, or comment on the issue brought up by Councilmember Steckler. I did, in fact, receive notice from the complaint regarding the music in Safeway. And. I did reach out on Sunday and spoke with the individual. We did send officers out to the location. They did notice the, or observe a ordinance violation. And we're able to, to take care of that situation. So, and I was able to contact the complaint after that. And it was satisfied with the outcome. So I think that we're progressing in that area as well.
Thank you. Thank you for following up.
That's here. Thank you. Okay, last quick question. You told me. How does that affect the security of information when they have to use state computers as opposed to their own personal computers or? I was looking through this to try and see if you're saying, calling that out. Just curious about that.
Yeah, that is specifically called out. Councilmember Steckler, there's a requirement. That, that they, that people working remotely only use their city computers for city business. And there are protocols that they will have to follow in terms of making sure that they secure that equipment.
I see that using city, Mill Creek provided or personal equipment. That's why I saw. My concerns have said personal equipment under security. So that was my question. I didn't. So you're saying it would be city provided equipment, not personal equipment?
Correct.
It might be somebody to take a look at. That's down there.
Don't check it.
Anything else?
That is correct. It does say personal equipment. Now there are, now we, there are ways to ensure security through personal equipment. If you're, that would be an IT. I think I need to bring IT and Mayor Joe to actually explain that. And we can provide a report on that later on how that is to happen.
So you're able to allow them to use a personal equipment and maintain the security and control for the city?
That is correct. Yes, sir. Yeah, it is very common across many cities to have employees use personal equipment for work and. Still have that security from an IT standpoint. And, and we'll do more research and let you know more detail later. Thank you.
I don't understand. When you say personal equipment, are you talking computer or are you talking the modem and the internet, things at the home that aren't necessarily owned by the city?
Employee personal equipment, personal laptops, personal desktops, employees own in their own homes.
Okay, there's no other questions. We do not have an executive session tonight. So before we adjourn, we'll do audience communication with everyone. Okay, Will has his hand up first. So Will, follow my side on the open name and address in three minutes, please.
Will Nelson, one four nine two five, twenty ninth Drive, Southeast Mill Creek, Washington. I just noticed that Laura has a new last name. So I presume some belated congratulations are in order in that regard. If it's been a long time, I'm sorry. I didn't notice until tonight. As for, since you've passed the resolutions returning the. Fire contract money to the voters, I will withdraw my. Candidacy for being on the con committee and will do so in writing by next week. And thank you.
Barton.
Barpital fourteen oh one, one hundred forty fourth place, Southeast Mill Creek. Thank you, Mayor. I wish to thank everyone, especially the staff for all the hard work on the annexation to South County Fire. I just wanted you all to know that I truly appreciate all the hours and effort everyone has spent on this for all our Mill Creek residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Barton. Anyone else? Not seeing or hearing any other hands. There's no objection. We will adjourn the meeting at seven twenty three and. See you for a special meeting on virtual, in the virtual world next Tuesday and our next regular meeting.